Okay, okay folks, it's seven o'clock. And I'm gonna call the planning board meeting on February 20th, 2018 to order. My name is Kathy Barnard. Let me quickly introduce the planning board members that are here, starting at my extreme right, Brad Harriman, the representative from the Board of Selectmen. Next to Brad, Paul O'Brien, John Thurston, Mike Hodder. And then to my left, Peter Goodwin and Matt Sullivan is the planning director for the town. The first item on the agenda tonight is an item that we reviewed last week. And we continued it until tonight and to get some additional information. So let me just read this into the record. Sixteen North Main Street LLC, sixteen North Main Street, TaxMap 217-101, Case 201803. This is a site plan review from addition to a building, patios and plantings. And this is, as I said, a continued public hearing. So the applicant has some additional information and we'll have some questions, I'm sure, and Matt will have some comments. Von Dugan is not here, so we have six members sitting tonight. So applicant, you're on.
I'm Brian Berlin. I'm a licensed land surveyor and septic designer and owner of a company called Land Tech, who's been in the area for thirty-plus years now. Matt had sent an email to me saying that some of the planning board members were having trouble reading the plan. So we cleaned our printer jets and have clearer plans if you'd like me to distribute them. In that thirty years, my eyesight has dimmed quite a bit, and I don't see the progression of the plotter doing less and less detail, but we did clean it out and those prints are much clearer. This property is fondly known as the Yum-Yum Shop. I'm sure many of you have been there. Its current uses is a bakery, a restaurant, and an ice cream stand. It is currently only open seasonally. It's a quarter-acre property, has eighty-two feet of road frontage on South Main Street, and twenty-four feet of Lake Winnipesaukee frontage. I try to keep things simple, so I'll just kind of simplify what the proposal is.
The battery may have chosen nice moments ago dead, which I'm prepared for.
And with me tonight is Peter Kelly, who operates and was the former owner, and Shane Delaney of Blue Ridge Landscaping. Simplifying before what Matt simplifies, there's just a few major things going on here. One is to add a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-foot addition to the west side of the existing building. That is right here. It is twenty-eight by eight-foot-six feet. It also includes a three-by-ten entry. This is a open entry, but it's a roof overhang at the main entrance of the building. The other major thing going on is to replace the front landscaping and front patio. What's shown here in green shade, which the prior plot did not show clearly, is a planting area. It's all soft scape. Shown here in the brown shade is a new patio, replacing the old one, yet this will be a pervious patio, accepting rainwater and percolating it into the ground. We're also better defining onsite parking. The plan of record, which is year 2000, just has a note going across eight existing parking spaces. However, when you analyze it, there's no way you can find eight existing parking spaces in there unless they're stacked. So we have reconfigured that parking into four spaces, which includes a van-accessible handicap ramp, right, not ramp, space here.
Well, you showed five parking.
We had five before, but I thought I got a consensus from the board that if we could widen the aisle by removing a parking space, that would be an improvement. So we have done that. We've removed a parking space here. We've kind of tweaked everything so it just hugs this southerly boundary line, and that opened the aisle from fourteen-point-one feet to a minimum of sixteen-point-three feet, which is quite a bit more space. Another major change here is they want to be open year-round if they can. So since the last hearing, we have removed any proposals for replaced patios or new patios to the rear of the premises. In the previous plan, we were going to replace this existing patio with a larger pervious patio, stepping down to a lower-tiered patio, also to be impervious, but that has been abandoned by the clients.
Is that off the table, or is that a later thing now?
It could come later. I can't promise it won't.
But the size of the remaining deck is to be the same, or enlarged?
The existing deck will remain, and the existing steps going down.
Okay, so that's the same.
No change to that, correct. All of this caused a change to the original impervious, excuse me, impervious surface analysis. In the prior plan, there was a reduction of 1,148 square feet, whereas in this new plan, the reduction is down to 927 square feet of new pervious area, or think of it as a loss of impervious area. That's an eleven-point-one percent reduction. I previously discussed that we had tweaked the parking and redefined it down here, widening the aisle. We have added three ballards to the plan, two ballards at this corner and a ballard at this corner. Those are protecting the new addition. Any questions so far? We've added a gate restricting public access to behind the building, so there's now a proposed gate here, whereas there was no control before, other than a shed right there. And the shed is still to be removed and the slab it sits on. In fact, the shed is already removed. We've designated a solid waste storage space with an exterior access. So before, it was kind of undefined, but they decided to put it right here, in this portion of the addition, with a three-foot door accessing it from the outside. These will be standard solid waste receptacles brought to the land for the transfer station. Pretty much every other day is their current history. In response to the last meeting, the abutter Bronzoni, I believe it was, we've added a rain gutter, picking up these two scuppers, which drain the roof. And that rain gutter will go to a downspout here. There's also already a downspout here draining this portion of the roof, where there's no change proposed.
Can I ask a question, Chip?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, where's all that water gonna go?
I just have it going down onto the ground. I can create a stone-filled dry well to diminish some of its velocity.
Maybe for a conversation as we go along, but it seems to me that you have a good-sized roof. I think you're trying to address your neighbor's concern about putting water in his basement, or allegedly putting water in the basement, so good. But if you're moving the water over to the corner, you're actually pushing more volume of water to that corner, at least I think you are, tell me if I'm wrong. If you are, you probably need to think about where you're gonna put it. Can't run off on Yankee Pedler's site.
I'm willing to have that conversation, but there's not a lot of room here. Currently, the water is flowing, some of it's flowing towards the Bronzoni building, and the rest is just flowing towards the lake. Again, my current thought is to put a stone-filled dry well that would receive the downspout, and it would just overflow gently.
Mm-hmm.
And run towards the lake. We've also added, have I addressed the question for now, or?
For now.
Can we bring it up later?
Yep, yep.
Also added a roof-mounted sign above the entrance, which would be right here. This will be an unlighted sign. And we've added exterior lighting and patio landscape lighting. I'll address the building-mounted writing, lighting, and then we'll have Shane address the patio lighting, which he designed. Three downward-directed wall packs are proposed on the addition, one on each side of this door, and one on this end. Three gooseneck lights are proposed on the front of the building, here, on this side of the entrance, two on each side of the ice cream window, lighting up both the building and the menus. Those same gooseneck lights are gonna light the new proposed sign, or relocated sign. So there's five gooseneck lights in all, three wall pack lights in all, and this original sconce at the rear of the building lighting the existing patio will remain. And since we're on the subject of lighting, I'll have Shane Delaney discuss his lighting plan for the landscape and the patio.
Good evening, everyone. Shane Delaney, operations manager for Blue Ridge Landscaping. And the lighting's pretty basic. First off, it's LED lighting, it's low-voltage lighting, so it's nothing near as bright as this. And with the way technology is nowadays, we have complete control to dim it from one-hundred percent down to zero. So I did a little math for you guys, called the manufacturer, to help, since I don't have any samples, to kind of guide you. I'll give you a visual of what it would be. So we have thirteen of these well lights that go into the ground. So those are, excuse me, those are nine hundred lumens, okay? If we were to dial them down to two percent, that would be eighteen lumens, which comes out to point-two watts. So you figure, what's a light bulb in your house? How bright is that? Reduce that drastically. So the way that this is going to work is we install a transformer, we set it, and it's all automatic with an astrological timer based on your geographic location. So it does it. With dawn till dusk, everything's controlled automatically. So there's really no room for human error. So, and in regards to the well lights, I'd like to propose, if any one of you would like to come up, if we get approval to install them, we can set them to the proper level that you all agree on, and we can program it there, so nobody can change it. So right there, it's a win. The other four lights, which are located in this planting area, those are area lights. There's a cap that goes on them, and they shine down. And again, with all of these lights, there's different lenses that you can put in to change the spectrum of light and how far out it goes. So everything's fully adjustable. So if there's something that perhaps isn't just right, we can change it in the field pretty easily. And then around the wall, you're going to have, well, we'll get to the wall in a minute, but the lights sit underneath the cap. You don't see them. They shine straight down, and they have a beam of around sixty degrees. So you set those every five or six feet. It lights up the wall, so nobody runs into them, nobody walks into them, trips or falls, but it can't blind you. It's just, it's impossible, because it's all facing down. Any questions on the lights?
The well lights shine up.
Well, first off, they're recessed. They're recessed, number one. Number two, you can set the angle. But the idea is to put them at such a low light level that they're kind of just like a small marker light. So if it's really late, you can kind of see the path that you're walking on, mark out the corner of the hardscape. Because around this area, it's all going to be plantings, which we're trying to keep green space in Wolfboro.
So these are, these are more directional lights than they are illuminating anything?
No. We're going to put them in here, so they're basically going to light up the plants, but also you'll get just a little bit of light to see the hardscape, so you know where you're walking. They're not going to be shining straight up, so you can see them on the ceiling. If you were to put one right here, it wouldn't touch the ceiling if you turn off the lights.
Peter, I do think they are directional. They're intended to guide pedestrians and...
Oh, I thought you meant the light itself being directional.
The idea is that they're, so that people can figure out how they get from point A to point B.
Correct, yes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were speaking of the light. Again, this is, we're not installing a Home Depot product. This is a commercial product. It's designed for this application. Comes with a lifetime warranty, waterproof, the connectors, you're not gonna have to go back in. It's a very well-designed product. To be backed by a lifetime warranty, it has to be. So that's why we install it. And again, we're a local company. We're out of Tuftonboro. I live here in Wolfboro myself, so I take great pride in my town, and I want to do a good job. And I'm gonna go there with my son, so I'm not gonna install any lights that are gonna make him blind or trip and fall and anything like that. As far as the patio goes, I'm sure you've all seen it. Right now, it's on a slope. It's not designed very well. The watershed coming into the town, the town roads, the water system, it's not good. And it's kind of an eyesore. So what we propose is to raise this with a wall. It's going to be less than two feet. It's actually gonna be around twenty-one inches. I'll get to that in a minute with the product, but it's going to be a permeable paving system. So basically, instead of having everybody sitting on a slope and water just rushing off, it is an actual permeable product, and all of the water, I've already done a soil test. It's all sand underneath there, for the most part. Really good drainage. So the water will hit this, it'll go down into the natural soils, and naturally dissipate. And that is going to be for the patio area. And then this area here is great for handicap access. It's gonna be a constant slope down to the walkway. This is going to be a photo bench area. All of this is permeable as well. And this provides easy access for everyone, and then the slope down here. So what we've done is changed the grades, we've changed the watershed, and I think we've helped everybody traverse the terrain here a little bit easier, and also helped the main factor is the watershed coming into the town roads.
Are those pavers that you're putting in there?
They're actually slabs. I can show you on the backside here, if you'd like.
Whoops, whoops, whoops.
I got it over here. I got it right here.
Oh, you do? Yep, okay, Brian did his homework. You guys are good.
They look like pavers.
Yep, so this is the wall. This is what it'll look like. It's an aged product with a slate cap on top. It's a, I don't know if you, any of you are familiar with Tackle Block? It's a very well-made company. Very well-made company that makes very good products. And the entire installation is going to be done with Tackle Block material.
What is actually gonna be planted in the planting area?
The exact plants, every name of them. You would have to ask the owner of the company, Donald Coe. He has the flu, so that's why he's not here tonight. But it's, it's, our point, our plan is to get around twenty-one inches of height out of this area, and then put in plants that are two feet or less, eighteen inches, two feet, to try to really give this some privacy, and kind of block the roadway, sitting there enjoying a meal with your family. So, and we want to keep it green around Wolfboro.
And what about the planting area, which is up on top, which is a larger area?
Yep. This is going to just be kind of crowned, kind of raised, and the exact plants, as I said, I don't have the planting schematic with me, but...
But it's not gonna be a problem if people are milling around and walking on it?
Nope. We're used to people walking through all of our landscapes, so we're prepared for that.
I think you answered my question. I was wondering if, on that right-hand side, when the water goes down by the photo bench, it would slide off into that planting area?
Nope, this is all permeable. So the product is called Antica. They're all round, different shapes, but this is all filled with stone, the same as the patio. So it all just goes down. It goes right down into the, to the stone bed, and it naturally seeps in. I've been doing lakeside hardscapes for almost twenty years. I'm sold on the permeable paving systems. I'm ICPI certified. I've been through the training for it. I know how to install them correctly and make them last. And we see our roads out here with gravel. Everything's up and down. You install it on stone, nothing moves, the water's taken care of. It's a, it's a good system, so.
Other questions about the landscaping?
We're good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go back to the parking?
Certainly.
In that, I'm looking at the one, two, three, four sites there, and I'm wondering what happens between number one and the road. To me, that looks like it would be a place where people are going to park, and it might be delineated in a space, or else it's just going to be where people just sort of show up.
Where is, I'm sorry?
Going from number one towards the main, that area there.
This area here. Yes.
If there was, if there was a parallel spot there, that would end up adding a spot and might make it less confusing for people when they're trying to park.
I experimented with parallel parking here. For a parallel parking space, you need an aisle, which would be behind all of these spaces. I believe it was twenty-eight feet long, and also parallel with here. So that parking space would be way out here for that aisle.
But I was thinking on the, on the north side, there, going along where it says eighty-nine point eight-one total, that line?
That parking space would be twelve feet wide, bringing us to about where the end of this ruler is. There is no maneuvering aisle to the side and in front of it, because it's consumed already by the spaces.
I think, if I, I, I think what Pete's getting at is, that little trapezoid that's formed there, people might just drive straight in and park.
They might. But it would not be delineated as a parking spot.
Yeah, is that, is that your concern, they just drive?
Yes, and I'm just saying that...
Drive straight in and park.
And if there was a delineated spot there, it might keep it more organized, but it may be that would be something that you would end up doing at a later date, when you ended up saying, oh, yeah, everybody's parking there, let's try to keep them the right...
Or you could stripe it or something.
Well, the thing is, if you put a parking space there and they park head in, how are they gonna get out?
Yeah.
Back, back out and go around the other cars.
Back out on the main street.
Back out under the, under the sidewalk.
It was not, it's, I think he, I think, in my opinion, the parking solution he's come up with is about as good as you can get out of this space.
Yeah. And this idea that was proposed about just moving that, that line over, is that prospectively a later thought? Because you have a turnaround here, right?
Oh, you're talking cooperating with the abutter?
Yeah, I think, I think, Bob, you said, you know, let's go eliminate the second curb cut. Is that kind of a later idea, if at all? I mean, it might be something you'd think about later on?
It would not be up to me. It would be up to Bob's group and my clients. It's probably not as simple as it seems, especially for Bob's group, because they're a condominium, which means they may have to update their condominium site plan. All doable stuff, but all takes a lot of process and planning.
So maybe a later-on idea? Maybe.
Even if it was an easement, it would...
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, well, just a second. We need to, I mean, you can make some comments. Happy, happy to hear from you, but if you want to do that now, why don't you come on up?
Yeah, I'm Bob Hughes, I'm with the abutter. And, yeah, all the decision-makers are basically here for that. So we, I mean, this other parking plan, you raised a very good point, people just park everywhere. And lots of times, we can't even get out. So this parking plan really should happen. It opens up at least a third more space in there. And I think you pick up two or three, or at least, I can't imagine, you can't get six or seven spots if we do this. And it gives more room for people to back out, gives more room when the truck's there. It's a pretty simple plan, and we can either do it through easement, or you had mentioned boundary line adjustment, if that became more important, and I'm sure we can arrange for that, too. So it's just, it's a, this other plan doesn't work. You raised a good point, because we lots of times have to back out, turn, go the other way, wait for someone to move. And again, to pick up, and I think also the town will pick up potentially a parallel spot on the street, get rid of our ten-foot curb cut, and then you take the length of that first parking spot. Town may pick up one on Main Street, too, so just, it's better for everybody. And I, we don't have any trouble with the decision in-house, whether the mechanics are having to, whether it's a boundary line adjustment or some agreement. We're happy to comply. We love the project, we're happy to help them, we're very supportive, but the parking really does need to be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all set, or did you? Okay, thank you.
And I experimented doing that, and there are, in fact, many more additional parking spaces available. But the timing, especially considering they're a condo, it makes it more complicated to do the planning of that and the necessary easement and/or bloodline adjustment documents. But it is a far better solution. Just doesn't work for the timing that my clients need now. They do need to, you know, they've got a gutted building, they need to move forward.
The combination of a boundary line adjustment and a condominium site plan amendment would take, it would take one to two months, combined with the legal portion of that as well, and I think that's, that is a significant delay. I think it's something that should be really seriously considered down the line for the site, but it is a significant delay for this particular applicant, I think.
But if I understand correctly, there's, there's nothing, there's, there's no, there's nothing that they would do, if they expanded this, that's actually, it's a plus. You know, we're looking, so we're gonna look at this as it is. If it gets expanded, unless you do something really goofy when you expand it, it would be a plus.
It'd be wonderful.
Okay, it'd be a winner. Okay, good, thanks.
Compared to last Tuesday, I believe we have a much better plan and more complete plan than the one originally submitted. And I hope you will find this application as complete. I also hope that you will find it or agree that a conditional approval, subject to Matt's conditions in his plan review, and subject to whatever conditions we come up with tonight, is also possibly done tonight. But to throw water on all that, I'm going to request three waivers and request a decision from you that a zoning ordinance does not apply in this case. Which one would you like to do first?
Well, you're the applicant.
I'm gonna ask that you consider a landscaping provision in the zoning ordinance as not applicable to this case, because this is a grandfathered condition and a grandfathered parking area. Ordinance 175-137 in the parking landscaping says on at least three sides of the perimeter of an outdoor parking lot, there should be planted at least one tree for every eight parking spaces abutting the brimber. Such trees shall be placed that some part of a parking space is not more than thirty feet from a tree.
Okay, generally, on an existing site that's non-conforming, what we try to do is bring the site more into conformance. So do you believe that you've done that, as far as landscaping is concerned? So do you believe that you've done that as far as landscaping is concerned?
It's no more non-conforming than it is.
Have you brought it more into conformance?
Not the landscaping provision because the parking is right up against the lot line.
Okay.
And it's, there isn't a tree there now.
Okay.
I am baffled where to put a tree unless it goes in this trapezoidal area, but it still wouldn't touch all the parking spaces within 30 feet.
Okay.
I don't believe this site is capable of it, never has been, and can, that you have the authority to consider it unapplicable because it is grandfathered.
All right. Well, you also cited 175-155. And that talks about the fact that we can waive landscaping. And it talks about, and I talked to Matt earlier today, because it talks about proposed projects, and it mentions the C1 district. And our regulations do talk about the central business district as being C1.
They do.
And so I don't know why they say C1-CS. I know what you said before, possibly that Center Street. But actually, when we talk about that zoning district, we talk about Route 28/Center Street. So that doesn't make sense. It makes much more sense if, when you look at the waiver standards, I mean, they're talking about the downtown developed area, that that section would give us the authority to waive the landscape regulations, mainly because of what you just said. Yum-Yum Shop isn't the only place that can't put landscaping in the downtown area. That would be, well, Mr. Hughes's building couldn't either. So there are many properties. So I think that's why that section was put in the regulation. So in this case, I think that this waiver is in the zoning ordinance, and it's in there for a legitimate reason to help develop the downtown area. So...
I concur, Madam Chairman.
Okay. So I just help justify that, the landscaping, without going to the other section.
I thank you for that. Perhaps I read 175-155, too narrowly.
Yeah. I think if you look at it in the broader context, that it certainly does give us the right to waive the landscaping requirements.
Allow me to say, phew.
Okay. Well...
The other 2 are...
You're not all the way there yet.
Right. Yes.
Well, I know.
Do you want to, do you want to deal with these one at a time?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead? Somebody who'd be willing to make a motion to grant a waiver pursuant to 175-155, which would, okay, not require landscaping. Motion has been made and seconded in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Okay. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also going to request a waiver from 173-21. This is site plan regulation regarding stormwater drainage and having a professionally engineered drainage plan prepared. The reason for this waiver is impermeable surfaces are decreased. Therefore, onsite or offsite runoff is decreased. Onsite infiltration is increased. On the last plan, we had a letter from professional engineer Jeff Lewis stating those things were factual. I've discussed the revised plan with him and sent him kind of a preliminary revision 2, if you will, showing the new areas without those rear patios. And he's going to reissue the same letter that runoff is decreased by this proposal.
If this board were to grant this waiver, I would suggest it be a conditional grant based upon the receipt of a revised letter showing a decrease in the decrease in the impermeable surface.
I have no problem with that.
Well, otherwise, we have no documentary evidence here to support.
I will get through that document.
And thanks for, you know, actually decreasing the permeable. That's good. So now I'm back to that little back corner.
Phew.
You know, I have no, I have no data that tells me how much water you're harvesting off that roof and depositing over there. But my, but just, I mean, just think about it. You're actually moving that water away from where it used to come down, and you're putting it over there. So the volume is going up, and it's hitting the ground. And if your colleague, a friend, is going to write us a letter, we need to know whether that gets dealt with as well. Because I do think that you're plunking a lot of water down there. It's either going to go in the lake, which is, we don't like, or it's going to go into the next-door neighbor's, you know, side yard, which is, they don't like. And to the extent that we can solve the problem, we need to solve the problem. That's just kind of the way I look at it.
Where else could it possibly go?
Into the ground, into a dry well.
Would not the dry well that the applicant was discussing account for most of the rainfalls that we get, other than the deluges, which would then flood that little well, which the applicant indicates in his testimony is going to flow into the lake through the patio?
Filtered. Well, first of all, I don't see a dry well over there.
It's not on the plan. He said he would do that, and we would have to make it this, if we approve this application, conditional upon the appearance of a dry well at that spot on the plan.
I just, yeah, I kind of agree with what you're saying, Mike. I'd like to know whether a dry well is going to be put there. The water's going to go into the dry well. It's going to find its way to the lake eventually. But it'd be a little less, it'd be more filtered, I guess is probably what we're looking for. I think we all just share the same concern. We just don't want bad stuff getting into the lake.
Well, the dry well is going to slow down the velocity of the outflow.
Correct.
And then it'll filter itself through the sand and whatever is underneath the patio surface out into the lake. That system might work.
What do you think, Jim?
Well, excuse me. What about moving that over more towards the center of the...
Patio?
Yeah. Unfortunately, you have to draw the halfway mark between the abutter, where allegedly water's going into his basement, and the area where we're dumping it so close to the line. Obviously, if you put a dry well in between the middle of both of them, then at least the water would still stay on your property for a little bit longer. And then it wouldn't be so centrally focused because that area over there where that downspout is, is a drop-off of about 4 feet from the top of the patio, which is at a 512 elevation. And the top of the concrete wall is 507. So it's like where the downspout comes out, the water goes straight downhill. And that, there's nothing there to hold that water up once it starts bubbling out over the top. So there's a problem.
So you're, but just if I could, can I ask my colleague a question, Jeff?
Yes, certainly.
So what, John, what you're saying is that you're not disputing where that we need a dry well. What you're wondering is, what's the right placement?
Yes.
And I think what you're saying is, it looks like you got a wall scouts out there. Is it, you know, kind of that blue, sort of blue wall scouts over there? Is that kind of where you were thinking about it? Might be around there?
It would definitely be a better location. Yep. It would give it a chance. If it ran straight down, it would, then it wouldn't be running towards the back of the building, and it would actually run over a embankment of grass there. It's kind of sloped and tilted a little bit, but we still have a free run.
That makes sense.
Right now, the downspout is on the corner of the building here. If you put it here, you're getting it closer to the...
This is the angle. See, it's going to slope down like this, and it could run straight down.
Well, he's got, the downspout's here, the dry well's here. The water's going to run into the patio here. You've got a bigger area of patio here to do absorption. If you move the downspout here and put the dry well here, you have a shortage of...
That's still better. That's still better than, again, right next to the line. This is a steep incline. That's like, that's the straight downhill part. So if it's right there, that's straight downhill, too. So...
May I make a suggestion that, with the exception of putting this gutter in, which takes the water to the downspout, the water coming off the eve in that entire area where the downspout is, is going to go towards the neighboring property. We would assume that that neighboring property is also impermeable. And so therefore, I would suggest that all the water that presently comes down off that eve goes down basically in the patio, or basically to the patio, or else it goes into the neighbor's basement, which is probably not desirable. And so therefore, I don't think that if there is a dry well to pick up most of that water, as you indicated at the corner of the building, that probably is going to do the same job as, you know, the needed job to get things done. I don't think that having a dry well somewhere else is necessarily going to help unless you wanted to put 3 or 4 in to collect it in 3 or 4 places.
The downspout is currently existing now?
No, it's an addition. No.
It's a scupper. Where is the...
This downspout, the same location, is draining this eve. So there's another roof gutter right here.
Okay. But this downspout currently exists? This one here?
This one is intended to be shown as proposed for the new system.
Is there one there in existence?
Yes.
And where is that?
Same corner, right here.
Okay. Same corner.
Yes.
So essentially, an existing condition being improved with new construction materials?
It's a new gutter here.
Yes.
To add to this gutter.
Okay.
So you're really doubling up the amount of water that you're dumping?
This is already here. We're adding to it, yes.
Yeah. You're adding to the water.
More than doubling.
Perhaps a lateral going this way and putting the dry well here so it doesn't run over any of these banks is my first thought.
But you're going to, you intend to be using this patio for customers?
That is their intent and their purpose.
And a lateral would be kind of in their way?
No, it'd be underground.
An underground ladder.
Matt, do you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I just have, I actually have a question now. So the rear patio will be used for seating, customer use?
There has been historic seating there, yes. Is that not correct, Peter?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I obviously share the concerns of the board. I mentioned in my review that the downspout is essentially probably more than functionally doubling the drainage that's going into that area. I think there's some solution that has to be designed. I think that a dry well alone may be enough to filter and mitigate any excessive drainage, but I don't really know. It's difficult to tell based on the zippography there. With that said, I don't think we need an engineered solution here. I think a logically sized dry well in this location would be adequate. But I do think a conversation specifically with the abutter would probably be a good thing for the applicant and the owners to do as well.
Yeah, I think...
To the microphone, please.
Okay. Can you, and we can't negatively, I mean, that's very clear. We cannot negatively affect any property owner.
Working for the town of Tufton Borough on the road crews, there's under drainage for really wet areas. So what if we were to take the roof water and run it, even if you combine both gutters into one downspout, and run that into a larger culvert, so to speak, for lack of a better word, and run it along the building, and you could almost do it like a septic system? Fit to where, I've been on the backside of that building, honestly. The fence is over the line. That area needs a wall. You could stone that whole thing if you didn't want to lay in permeable pavers. But you could run an enormous water-holding system sideways, you know, with the building.
Like a filter?
Exactly.
So would you do a perforated, like a perforated PVC pipe to a, could you do a perforated PVC pipe to a dry well?
You could. On the patio side, you could have your dry well there. But all the water coming off would almost feed into a manifold. If the pipes are level, water has to build up. If you have 2, 3 18-inch culverts side by side, everything's going to flow and work, filter, and then it's finally going to hit the dry well. So you have storage space.
Yeah. Bravo. Bravo. That's the, that's the real concept, and that's the way it should be.
But that's, we're talking about an engineered solution...
Not really.
...which we are not going to be able to get.
I've seen quite a few engineered plans that didn't work in the real world.
My point is, if we're going to waive this ordinance, we have to have some justification to waive it on. The presence of a dry well, everyone understands, easy enough to comprehend the concept. The planner suggests that that might be sufficient to solve the current problem. I would suggest, rather than going to a further discussion of a solution, which I'm going to have to see on paper to be able to understand and pass this waiver with, we agree on a dry well. And should anything develop subsequent, it'll be between the abutter and the applicant. Dry well will have satisfied my concerns for due diligence and not doing any harm by approving this application to an abutting property.
And also, if I may speak, the neighbor's property with water in the basement, he should have functioning perimeter drains. His basement should be protected because he should have enough concrete sticking out of the ground where the water's not going to build up and flood. You would need an enormous amount of water to go up through somebody's cell.
It's our job, it's our job, the planning board's job, to make sure that the abutters are not adversely impacted. So how do we do this?
Well, I think it's, based on our conversation, I think it's risky to waive the drainage standard now if you're not sure whether or not the dry well is going to be adequate to handle that runoff. It does depend on your comfort level. I mean, without any kind of formal drainage analysis, you cannot tell in this moment whether or not a dry well is adequate to do it. It's a calculated risk, I think. So, Ethy, it's a difficult question to answer. But I think, I think the reality is waiving the drainage standards maybe isn't the right direction to go in if the board is not sure about whether or not what they're proposing is going to be adequate.
How do we, how would we move this forward if we didn't waive that?
I think that, well, there are a couple ways. You could waive it and then have a very specific conditional requirement, like a dry well. But again, we don't, we don't know that that's going to work. Or we could simply continue it until they have some sort of design solution. But I'm not sure if continuing is the right direction to move in either.
I don't think that's in the best interest of the applicant. I don't think it's in the best interest of the abutters either.
I don't think so.
But I think our friend here said that you're going to have a letter invited by...
Jeff Lewis.
Jeff Lewis that is going to attest that not moving water off the property... Is that what I heard you say?
The letter states there's no increase in flow going off the property.
So, so if we waived the requirement and said, "But you got to put a dry well in," then our friend, Mr. Lewis, is going to have to consider the impact of having that dry well in and is going to have to tell us whether that does or doesn't increase water coming off the property. Is that logical?
All we're doing is relocating existing water. And if I could just point out...
No, I know you're relocating existing water, but what you're doing is you're relocating it to the corner of the property. And it's, it's not just kind of blithering all over the place. It could go in 1 or 2 directions. One of them is the lake, and the other is the next-door neighbor's property.
If I could, Paul, the landscape gentleman described a system that goes up against the side of the building that's long.
Like perforated pipe.
And the idea of drainage percolating into the ground is spread it out sideways and let it go down in. If you create a bucket hole, the bucket's going to fill up with water, and then it's going to go out the top. If they do that, it's a 6-inch filtered pipe, and it lays in the crushed stone. And he's got the crushed stone down, and it will all slip in to the ground. It's a much better system than a dry well.
Would we be comfortable waiving this requirement if we said a couple of things? That we want perforated pipe and a dry well? And we want to make sure that Mr. Lewis assures us that we're not moving any water off the property?
I think, if I may, I think the board is making this much more complicated than it needs to be. The original letter from Mr. Lewis attested to a reduction in impervious of 1,100 square feet. The revise is now 957. The difference is 200 square feet. In the letter, Mr. Lewis stated... In the letter, Mr. Lewis stated that the drainage patterns are not likely to change with the reduction in the impervious of eleven forty-eight or whatever it was. Nine hundred and fifty-seven is the new figure, difference is two hundred feet. How much, seriously, do we commonsensically expect the drainage patterns to change by the addition of another two hundred impervious square feet over the original application number?
I think Mr. Lewis's letter was talking about the patio out front.
Pretty much, yes.
We're not talking about the patio out front.
Right.
We're talking about, we're talking about putting the contents of the roof into the corner. That water, I agree, it's the same amount of water coming off the roof that it always came off the roof. It's just going to the corner. And so John, John Thurston's idea, I think, you know, I'm not going to use the whole water and thing. John Thurston's idea sounds rational, that a perforated pipe going into a dry well addresses the issue.
It gives us more treatment than it has now, if I allow to speak. Right now, there's two scuppers just dropping to the ground, totally untreated, flowing every which way, some of which into the abutters cellar. And I'll, I'm going to criticize this cellar just a little bit. It is way down there. It's a very, very low home. Here, if there is a small dry well to accept, accept the water, it will provide dilution to the velocities, do some filtration and percolation, and the rest would just gently overflow and flow overland to the lake, across grass and landscaped area. It's an improvement to what we have. It's not a perfect solution, but it is an improvement.
And that's all that we really need as a board to be doing.
Okay, you want to move in a car?
It's also helping out the abutter and taking water away from their area. So we're, we're making it less onerous on the abutter.
Yes, and I think the landowners were very generous to allow that solution to be offered to both you and the abutter.
I'd be willing to make a motion in the way of this.
Okay, if you'd make a motion with, with the condition you s-
I move that the board waive requirements of, what is it now, one seventy-five hyphen?
One seventy-three twenty-one.
One seventy-three hyphen twenty-one drainage, storm drainage, with the provision that a dry well be constructed at the base of the downspout leading from the corner of the building as shown on the plan.
And, and the receipt of the revised?
And the, and, and the receipt of the revised letter from?
Mr. Lewis.
L- Lewis. Does that currently make it? Okay?
That's good.
Yeah, okay. Motion has been, yes, it, it does.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion's been made and seconded to grant the waiver with the conditions just indicated for the storm, stormwater drainage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, all right.
Seconded?
Peter?
Okay, thanks, Peter.
Allow me to say few once again. Last waiver, I promise. This is to Site Plan Regulation eight, as it pertains to a construction guarantee. When you really look at this and you try to keep simple things simple, which I do to a fault, we're only adding a two hundred and eighty-three square foot addition to an existing building. We're adding a ten by three foot roof entrance enclosure, putting up some signs, a few lights, and striping a parking lot. I don't see where it's, a construction security is necessary in this case.
Matt, is a bond required, and what would it be required for, for this project?
So a, a bond could be required by the board, and the bond would cover any site work related to this project and may include landscaping as well. That is common for other site planners.
Well, we did just waive the landscape requirements.
Correct, but there's still landscaping being done in the streetscape area, but.
Okay.
I will say that there is a, there's a history of the board, in some occasions, choosing to waive this for, for projects with minimal levels of site work.
That there's a history of the board?
Of the board waiving this construction guarantee component, or at least not requiring construction guarantee.
Not requiring yet. We, we have not required a bond, but I don't.
Sorry, not waived, but not required a bond in cases with minimal levels of site work and really landscaping only, level improvements, or striping, things of that nature. So it hasn't formally been waived, but the board has not required it in the past.
Right, okay. Okay, so.
We don't need to waive it at all, do we? We simply?
Well, if.
You don't waive it.
It, it is an element of the Site Plan Review Regulations, and I think we should waive it. It hasn't been done in the past, but I think it's probably best to do that moving forward. That's my opinion. The board may choose to say they don't want to require it, but.
We should?
We could just, we could just.
I think you should waive it.
Just make a require, just to make a statement that we do not require a construction bond in this, for this application, then we haven't established a precedent which doesn't exist currently.
Okay, and comments, John, Paul, Brad, Peter? What, what do you think?
I think we should just make a statement that we don't require a bond in this, for this particular application. We've done that in the past, presumably. We're not establishing a new precedent.
Right, yeah.
We have the authority.
I had the feeling that John was getting ready to say something.
Well, I was, I was, I was thinking about that gas bottle that was right underneath that curve. Is that, is that going to affect the landscaping in there? Are you, no, isn't the, wasn't there a gas bottle shown?
Underground tank, John?
Yeah, the underground tank.
Propane, yeah, the tank. And I actually called, I actually called Steve at Eastern Propane and got the dimensions and the measurements for that tank, and it's actually two and a half, two and a quarter feet lower than our lowest point of excavation. And what we're going to do, even though it's a permeable paving system around it, we're going to leave all the sand around it. And also, with the tank being lower, the grounding bags that they have, we're never even going to be anywhere near them. So it's functional, it's safe, and any questions, you can call Steve at Tamworth, Eastern Propane. So we should, we should have nothing, and it's all going to be hand digging around there, so. I've placed many propane tanks, and it's, it's going to be okay.
How do they fill it?
Yep.
They come on the truck with a pot.
Does it have a cap that they fill?
It does have a cap. It's roughly two feet. So the tank is down substantially. If you were to drive by and see the top, the tank is lower, and it's around three and a half feet deep.
I'm fine. We're good.
Fine, fine with no bond?
No bond.
Just make a motion that in this particular application, we do not require a bond.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, so the waiver is not needed, and we're not going?
I'm reluctant to start a precedent.
I don't think a wa- I don't think a waiver's needed. We just don't require a bond for this.
Right, yeah.
This particular.
Do you want to make a motion?
I so moved that we don't require a bond for this.
Okay.
Particular landscape plan.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Board does have the discretion to determine the amount of the bonds. You're basically saying we're requiring a zero dollar.
Zero bond.
So it's, it's fine to not formally waive it. So, yeah, it's, it's completely appropriate.
Okay, and so those are the extent of the waivers, and with the waivers having been discussed and determined that the application is complete, so would somebody be willing to make a motion to accept this application as complete?
So moved, seconded.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Now you can breathe.
Other, well, not yet. Public comments from anyone? Okay, because I, I do have a concern about the reduction of the parking. And I'm not sure how we justify it. And I've looked at our, our parking ordinance, but how, first of all, you come in with five spaces, then we reduced it to four, or the applicant reduced it to four, and that was basically for safety reasons, for easier access. I know that we have public parking all around the town that presumably most customers already are using to go to the yum yum shop, or, and, but, what our job is, is to fulfill the requirements of zoning ordinance. And Matt, you can speak to this if, if you choose to, but I, I do see some flexibility in the central business district for parking. I mean, it, it says typically onsite parking is insufficient or is lacking. However, the downtown currently functions, and, and it does, and people do find parking. So, and it actually says that in our zoning ordinance. But where I get hung up is the fact that it says you can't decrease parking. Well, I mean, we were told that there was a plan with, what, eight approved spaces? You came in with five conforming spaces the first time, and that included a handicap parking space. So in my mind, that, that's a positive. I don't believe the site had that before. Now we're looking at four spaces, and I'm trying to justify this. So if you'll just bear with me, I know everyone wants to move on here, but there is a provision that talks about fee in lieu of parking. Don't anybody panic yet. And, and we actually put this in the ordinance, but when we adopted this section of the ordinance back in 2011, we said that you can, for required parking spaces that don't fit on the site, that you can pay for a fee in lieu of parking shall be. And then it has a dollar sign and a blank. And.
Guess it's not funny, but.
So my conclusion is that, that it does meet the section of the zoning ordinance to decrease. We're talking about decreasing.
I think.
Probably, what, four places from the eight that we said were.
Right.
Were there.
Yeah, it's, it's a, this section of the ordinance needs work. So outside of this application, I think the planning board will need to talk about this during the course of the year, but it is not clear, in cases like this one, whether or not you can decrease the amount of available parking on site. Kathy's right on that. My logic is that if you're able to provide additional parking in adjacent areas, that you are meeting the spirit of the ordinance, specifically the, the section that says parking is insufficient or typically lacking completely in the downtown area. And I think we want to push folks towards the parking that we have available for them, whether it's public parking or other parking. With that said, the challenge is, when you go from the five spots that were proposed, which is basically the maximum allowed or available on the site that meet our ordinance, going to four spaces isn't really provided for in the ordinance. I believe that the planning board can approve that reduction if it's an improvement in safety, which in this case it is. It's a widening of the aisle from the fourteen feet that was proposed to more than sixteen feet in some locations. So yes, it's not specifically provided for in the ordinance to reduce it by one space, but I think you can make a very legitimate argument that based on the conditions in the downtown district and the improvement of safety that this, that this adjustment creates, I think the board has the authority to do this.
Yeah, and, and it's very specific that it's for the central business district.
Yes.
It, it seems as if there is some flexibility, and I think the intent was that this would be a way to make it possible for people to make some changes in the downtown area. The only problem was, we just, we were going to do more research and talk to Dave Ford and find out what would be a, a good amount, and that didn't happen, so.
Well, I have a question with this reduction of five spaces to four in that had this been the first plan that we saw, where they brought in four spaces, we never would have thought that five were available.
Well, I think, I think we would have asked.
Well, we started out with eight.
Right, but the eight, the eight doesn't seem like it's a realistic number in that, that area. And so how they ended up getting that number initially was, I think, a problem for the planning board at the time that those parking spaces were approved.
Or they may have been existing not, they may have deemed them existing non-conforming parking spaces.
Yeah, more than likely.
I don't know if the board necessarily aired, but.
Plenty of them.
So, yeah.
They may have been existing and, and, and I'm going to use a word, maybe I shouldn't, but they've been used prospectively as municipal parking. People parked there and walked elsewhere. And there's just a whole bunch of things here. It seems to me.
You can get, you can squeeze them in if you want to.
It seems to me that the applicant is, is trying to increase safety.
Yes.
I've driven through there with, with my little Jeep, and, you know, it's, it's fun.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that rises to the top of.
I think the applicant is going to do, this shouldn't be a contingency, but I think the applicant has also signaled that, you know, over time, if they can get all the puts and, puts and takes put together, that what they want to do is they want to actually improve the, the street presence of this entire facility by, you know, dealing with this easement issue. I, I don't, I don't think that that's something we ought to, you know, impose upon them as a requirement to go do.
No, I agree.
The signaling here is that they just want to do a good job. And given, given all of that, and given that it is, in my view, if it is an increase in safety, I'm okay with moving it from five to four, and if there is a fee in lieu of parking, I would be willing to move that we make the fee zero.
I, I would, I would agree. The applicant, I mean, and there was a sense of this board last Tuesday that we liked the idea of four spaces as opposed to five because all of a sudden, we had a wider aisle and a lot more maneuverability room, and that's an extraordinarily tight spot, and I can't imagine how anyone ever saw eight spaces in there to begin with. We've, we have approved applications for businesses in the downtown which had inadequate parking by relying on the general sense that there's parking throughout the town. I don't think we should even think of fee in lieu of as something that's on this table currently, because we've never held any other applicant to that. I don't think that would be fair to hold this one.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we should do that, but it's one of those things we have to waive. You know, if, you know, I would, I'd be, I'm perfectly cool with what you want to do, but I think what Kathy was sharing with us is that there is a, is a procedure or something that says, if you got to reduce parking, you got to do this fee in lieu. If we have to follow that structure, I'll, you know, we'll follow it. But Michael, to yours, we have seen applicants come forward with, I don't have a lot of parking. We've had applicants come forward who have changed, you know, the, the, the texture of their, of their building from business to residential, and that has implications on parking, and that has seemed to move forward. I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever the right motion is that we have to put forward.
Well, in terms of safety, the applicant has done, as I said in the beginning of this, this evening, a good job in terms of safety, in my personal opinion. The ordinance that speaks of a fee in lieu of parking leaves the dollar sign blank. We could charge him a buck.
Well, no, I don't think we should, no.
I don't think you should, I don't think you should use that section of the.
Not even, I'm, I'm being facetious.
Yeah.
If, if the dollar amount is blank, the ordinance is imperfect.
Okay, I'll move that we waive the.
And should not be applied.
Well, it's zero.
I'll move that we waive the, the, what's the right words to use?
You, you, you can't, you can't waive it.
We don't need to, and we don't need to anyway.
And you don't need to.
We don't have to.
You don't have to.
So we just stay silent on the issue?
I mean, our job is to make sure that all the provisions of the zoning ordinance are satisfied, and that's all I was trying to do.
You're satisfied?
Yes, I am, with my little interpretation.
Then we're fine.
Okay, so any other issues?
Kathy, could I just, could I just comment too a little bit on, on the parking here? To go back to a comment that was made earlier on between, you know, Bobby, you know, with the offer there of the ten foot sliding and stuff. My opinion would be to, you know, for everybody to kind of basically probably not consider that, because then you're talking about putting two-way traffic in and out along by the building. We have a lot of foot traffic going back and forth from the parked cars to the, to the bakery stuff there. And plus, you're making the cars that are going to back out of there come down and then do a turnaround in their parking lot and then come back out again. And you've got to have a little more concentrated coming out across the, the street level there too. So my inclination would be to discourage that from being considered and that, you know, sliding those out, that extra ten feet, and then eliminating that, that easement that's there now of the access to the condos.
Yeah, and I, I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Hughes via email, and I asked him about the traffic pattern with that very question in mind. I just, I do wonder whether it's really a safer condition that you're providing. The other thing that's sort of interesting is that if a boundary line adjustment were to be done here, the condo lot would then have no. to be done here, the condo lot would then have no road frontage at all, which would be, technically, in the C1 CBD, you don't need road frontage, but I don't know if the planning board would want to create a lot with no road frontage, subject to an access easement. It just would be a question further down the line. So, I think there are some bigger, there are some bigger questions that go into whether or not we can do that, definitely.
Okay, do you have some conditions?
I have, well, I actually have two.
Can I, I have two, two further concerns.
Okay, sorry.
On your proposed addition, you show a six-foot double door for employees to get in and out of that little area, and the doors open out into the alley or into the aisle where traffic is gonna be coming backwards and forwards to reach parking spot number four for sure, and backing out maybe for parking spot number three. I was just wondering, would it make sense, does the board think it might make sense, to stripe the tarmac around those double doors, some kind of yellow diagonal striping inside a square outline indicating that this is an area to be at least aware of, because there will be people walking in and out, and doors will be opening there? I'm not sure, there's something that occurred to me.
I think it's a good idea.
I've seen that before, entrances where they've marked it with yellow striping.
On the ground, just so that people are aware that there's something, there's activity here, if the doors are closed, people come in with their cars, no problem, but if the doors are open subsequently, or if they're open while they're coming in, it would be good to have an indication on the ground. Do you understand what I'm suggesting? Is that likely to be a hardship to the applicant?
I don't believe it'd be hardship. In fact, I think it's a good solution.
Okay. And the one other question I had, and can we make that a condition?
Got it on there.
Thank you. Another condition I had...
You might even look into, and a sufficient thing would be to actually put a curb in there, which would be much more emphatic about keeping people away from those doors.
No, a curb would create further issue with the aisle width.
Yeah, people will be driving on top of it, too. The other issue is the one that the planner raised in his review, and it's the very last one as well. The Salmon D'elia architectural designs indicate PVC paneling to be used on the side of the building in its design features, and that's not really liked by our voluntary architectural design guidelines, and I was just wondering whether the applicant would be at all amenable to using some other kind of material in the place of PVC, or is that the only material that the applicant thinks he can use?
Do you want to feel this one? They have some PVC battens on the exterior of the building, rather than wood or something like that on the architectural plans? Sorry?
I haven't discussed that with either the architect or the owners. Peter tells me it, he put on there 'cause it's maintenance-free, pretty much. It's something I could bring to their attention. It is voluntary, as you said, but those plans were done far before my involvement.
I think it's something that should be brought to their attention.
We could put the thing...
And I think that my experience with the applicants and the owners, they may be amenable to adjusting the plans.
We could add that as a condition.
Yeah, I think the condition would be...
Than to consider.
Yeah, to consider.
Consider, fine.
Are we talking about Colma Board? Is that what we're talking about?
Talking about anything other than PVC panels, plastic.
Part of the exterior siding elements of the home was, not home, building, was PVC. I know some of it was to be covered with the menus, and they had some on the aisle side also, some board and batten where the batten was a PVC.
Okay, everyone all set? Matt, why don't you go through the conditions?
Just one very quick concern, actually, that I don't think we've addressed yet. The lighting provisions of the zoning ordinance, I did include those here. We're talking about some level of uplighting when it comes to the lights on the patio, the ground in the patio area. That's okay under the ordinance, as long as it's found that it doesn't spill onto neighboring properties or public ways. So, as long as the planning board feels comfortable with what's being proposed, there's no waiver required or anything of that nature, it's just, we don't allow uplighting typically under the ordinance, except in cases where the planning board is comfortable with it for landscaping and other purposes.
And I think they did, did address that, and was everyone comfortable with the...
The uplighting is on the inside of the retaining Baltimore wall, and there's a further foot and a half or almost two feet of planting above that as well. It's not likely to cast light onto the outside of the property or bother the pedestrian way, in my opinion.
Okay, that's it.
I'm okay with it, as long as you all understand the color temperature.
We'll raise your mic conditions now, Kathy. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm good with that, but I wanna go back to the plastic part here. You know, you would be surprised downtown that, in front of Emma Taylor's on the bottom part of that skirt, a lot of that molding is plastic wood. You really can't tell the difference, and so I'd be, I'd be against making them do something different. Again, this simulated wood grain plastic, if it was large panels, I can understand maybe the aesthetic nature of that, but a lot of the trim work and stuff on these buildings is plastic wood. It's maintenance-free, and it doesn't go bad.
Well, we're not requiring it, we're just recommending to consider it, and that's why I was asking, is the Colma Board, I mean, I have a personal situation on the seacoast where heck of a lot better than painting it every six months.
Okay, conditions, as I proposed them. Condition one, the following plans is amended to the date of this approval or incorporated into the approval. That's three plans, the existing conditions site plan dated February 16, 2018, the proposed conditions site plan, February 16, 2018, and the details plan, which is also dated February 16, 2018. These would obviously be amended to include any dry well or anything of that nature that's added on here. All plans to be stamped by a licensed land surveyor, a revised drainage letter to reflect the revised impervious surface conditions to be provided. The applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees, all the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant, or any requirements imposed by other agencies or part of this approval, unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation this notice herein shall generally be determining. An as-built plan stands by a licensed land surveyor to be provided to the town of Wolfboro following project completion. Insulation of erosion control measures and inspection by the town prior to any construction activities, if necessary. Insulation of a dry well adjacent to the downspout area, as shown on the plan. Striping to be added in the area adjacent to the six-foot door being added to the addition. And lastly, the applicant should consider material alternatives to the proposed PVC on the exterior faces of the building. And those are conditions one through 10 proposed.
Okay, everyone comfortable with those? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, planning board members, your thoughts, motions?
I'd be happy to move to approve this application.
With the conditions?
With conditions as stated, board numbers one through 10.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Definitely breathe now.
Parking ordinance.
That particular part of it is unenforceable. You have a blank in your ordinance, how can you possibly enforce it?
Okay, is Steve coming?
Sorry, no, not this evening, not this evening. No, not this evening, no, this'll be a brief review.
Thank you again.
Okay.
Good night, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on this, man.
No, uh...
We're gonna do role-playing tonight, aren't we?
No, we're actually not gonna do that. I think I backed off of that concept. I don't think that's necessary. It should be very, very short. To start off on the master plan item, I hope that everyone had an opportunity to look through this presentation that I'm proposing for next Tuesday night. Just wanted to get some general comments. I can certainly review it with you in detail if you'd like me to, or if anyone didn't have an opportunity to go through it. I'll sort of briefly touch on everything. First page is our agenda for the evening, then we'll go into talking about what exactly a master plan is, and I'll be the one providing this element of the presentation. And that'll go on for a few pages until we start to talk about the 2007 master plan. We'll give some background on what the chapter structure was then, and also talk about the vision statement, and also the implementation committee that came out of that. And something specific that this board requested that I think is a really excellent idea, and fortunately, I was able to take advantage of some existing resources to do this, is on pages that show the 2007 master plan progress, you'll see there about 12 different things shown here that were actually accomplished as part of the master plan and tracked by the implementation committee. So, I'll briefly review these with the public to show that the master plan is really the founding policy document for a lot of the changes that happened in the community. So, it's not just a plan that...
Okay, but those are really just highlights. I mean, many, if not the majority of the items were completed or considered.
Okay. I didn't mean to imply that these were the only items that were, but I can make sure I emphasize that. But yeah, this is just a selection. If you see something here that you saw in the old master plan that you really want me to talk about, I can include that here as well.
What page do you want, Matt?
And I'm sorry, I didn't include page numbers, I'm realizing that now. I'm now moving on to the master plan survey slide, Paul.
Why don't you just put something in the master plan progress, like examples of?
Sure.
So that people don't look at that and say to themselves, oh my God, is that all that they did?
Yeah, maybe Mike's saying the same thing. I think it'd be great to speak to the fact that there was a master planning activity in 2007, and things got done. Here's what got done.
Yeah.
A record of accomplishment.
And I guess the question is, am I capturing that well enough with the items that I've included here? I mean, I think, I tried to provide a selection...
I'll leave it up to you. You know, you can, that's just kind of a thing to think about.
Yeah.
It's fairly large, I mean, here's the, here's the matrix.
Right, remember that?
The progress reports on them, current to, was it 2009? It's pretty large.
I think the implementation committee actively met for six out of the 10 years that passed after the 2007 plan, so...
I don't think that's the record of accomplishment. The record of accomplishment is something that a citizen of this town can actually see. What got done?
Yeah, right, I agree. The implementation committee really is...
It's, it's kinda like filling in the blanks.
Yeah.
This, this, this matrix, speaking of only my time on the conservation commission, I can point to things that we did in response to requests or demands or suggestions by the master plan that you can walk out on and stand on.
So, you're looking for some more tangible examples of projects that were done? Okay.
Yeah.
And, and to emphasize that these are examples.
Yeah, right.
I guess I'm gonna ask, just to save some of my time, does anybody have some specific examples that they're thinking of? And if not, I'll just research it, but is there anything you can really think of that was a specific recommendation from the plan that you can go and stand on or walk on, or...
Yeah, the Ryfield Marsh, Ellie's Woodland Walk, that was built, the duck boarding was built as a Eagle Scout project some years prior to 2007, and Charlie Horsken and I went out there one year sometime ago with new duck board, which I bought, and spent a day or two installing new duck board.
Okay.
Make the, make the marsh more, more available to the public. You don't get your feet wet, or at least you didn't at that time, unless the beavers were back again, in response to the master plan's suggestion that our natural resources be more able to be enjoyed by the public.
Real Road Avenue.
Yeah, redevelopment there.
That got done.
Yep.
What the BMPs, like along, like Bean Park, some areas, you know, getting rans forward, putting in, out by like whatever, or...
Front Bay Park.
Okay, that's another example.
You know, those are small things, but, you know, people, people remember and they see them every day.
Yeah, and I definitely tend to kinda go to the items I have here as opposed to those, so that's, that's good, and I think that having more tangible examples is definitely gonna be easier to present, so, and I can put some visuals with those too, which will be helpful as well, so I'll, I'll do that.
The rezoning of Center Street to further protect...
Do I wanna bring, no, yeah, no, that's true.
Took us quite a few years.
Okay.
We also looked at, but this isn't very, very exciting, but we did look at all the zoning districts and redefined them. We adopted the Village Residential to make the town more pedestrian-friendly. That was one of the, and part of the smart growth concept. Have smaller lots near the downtown here, and we did, we really improved the walkability of the town. That was a...
I think a lot of the, from my memory of the master plan implementation committee, a lot of the things, like the got-done things, really fall into Dave's, Dave Ford's area. I mean, the amount of things that he got done, not just maintaining the roads, but, you know, rebuilding infrastructure, you know, he might be able to help with, you know, one or two vignettes on what was done in public works, water, highway. Barry could probably do the same thing on, on power, not just the maintenance stuff, but just net new things that they did during that time.
Okay. That's good, that's helpful.
By the way, we built a town hall.
We did?
Ski Lodge.
We built a town hall. We built the Ski Lodge.
Yeah, and Abenaki Ski Lodge.
And the rec building.
I'm curious, was the town hall part of the 2007 plan? Was refurbishing that, was renovating and refurbishing the town hall mentioned in the master plan?
It was, it was mentioned to keep the town hall in the downtown area.
In the downtown, right? I think Abenaki was mentioned to refresh it.
Right.
Oh my God, that's such a beautiful place, too.
Okay.
And in preserving historic buildings, because that was...
Okay. That's good. Okay, to move on, I am gonna talk about the survey, and we, I think we've gone back and forth quite a bit about how to present this.
Sure.
I'm hoping that this works for you. I tried to pick out what I thought were some relevant pieces from it that we can quickly review with everybody. Some of it is somewhat hard to read, and that's because I tried to include everything, so I'm gonna do my best to obviously have a handout available for everybody, but we are gonna sort of hope to get through this, and everyone will have an idea of how the 2006 survey compares to the 2016 survey that was done. Obviously, there's a lot of commonality there, there's a lot of things that did not change, but there are some things that did change, including, you know, parking demand in the downtown, the perception of that, which is funny, because we talked about that this evening. So, I think we wanna give people an idea of what the community at large is thinking about some of these concepts that are gonna be addressed in the master plan, and I think that I've done a decent job here of capturing that, I hope.
Are you gonna be taking questions during this presentation?
That's, that's a good question. I, I thought I might. I thought it would maybe be best to have it open.
The good news is you'll take questions, the bad news is you may have some people debating the data with you.
Right.
And that's not bad news, but they just might, right?
Yeah.
It might be that you would say if you don't understand something, because I don't think you wanna get bogged down with...
Yeah.
With the minutia of how things are gonna work, but...
That's, I think that's right.
If you're going too fast, you don't understand something, let me know.
I think that's right.
Otherwise, it could take forever.
Yeah, and exactly. You have a limited time period, and we have a lot of work to do on this.
Right.
And remember, your audience, you're basically preaching to the converted here. The people who are gonna show up next Tuesday are those who want to participate in the master plan, which assumes that they know something about what a master plan might be, and it's interesting to them, because that's why they're here in an evening and not home.
Right.
In the comfort of their own homes. So, I wouldn't go too heavy on the, this is what a master plan is, and aren't we great? We did all this much stuff. I would be prepared to cut it short. I think the organization and the, working from table to table, if that's how you anticipate the public is gonna work, that's gonna take the most of your time.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, looking at the length here, this is a pretty lengthy presentation. I may have to choose, I may have to cut some of these slides out, and I think that's fine.
Yep.
Just wanted to give you sort of the exhaustive...
Hey, Matt, can I add another one? This, this chart here that's, that's headlined Town Actions to Manage Development.
Yep.
I would say that all these graphs, factors moving to Wolfboro, et cetera, going all the way through that, are gonna be much better...
are gonna be much better just as handouts.
Okay.
Are much better what, Pete?
And I, just much better as handouts.
Agreed.
And I, you know, to, to put those all up and then have people try to figure out what they are from a distance, it's like, forget it.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's an inflammatory headline. I think, I think it's inflammatory. Town Actions to Manage Development. Maybe the, maybe is, is the question or the thing really what we're trying to say, what are the top five things that respondents said are important to us? To them, not to us?
The, the way I think best to do that is to really look at the first question, which is Factors in Moving to Wolfboro. That's the question that probably best aligns with what is important to people who live here.
Yeah, again, I, you know, we all have our own, you know, idea, notion of what a Master Plan is. It seems to me that, that we start out by saying, "What are the things that are really important to us? How do we get our heads and minds around those things? How do we turn those into projects? How do we fund them, and how do we get them done?" This doesn't tell me that. Now, maybe that's what you're intending to do. I, but by the way, I agree with Pete. I mean, these ought to be handouts. We ought to just kind of summarize what the important things are. This Actions to Manage Development sounds, sounds like, you know, we're, I don't know.
Okay, well, I will transfer this to a handout then.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, it may end up being that, you know, Factors Moving to Wolfboro, you might want to say 20 words about that in general, but then after that, move on.
Okay, do that. We'll then move into the 2018 chapters, quickly about how the structure has changed. And then we will talk about the subcommittees and how we've obviously taken several chapters and put them consolidated into these larger subcommittees. Following that, I'll talk about our planned schedule. This is something that the board really wanted to have a good, give a good sense of to the, the attendees and the audience. So I've included a calendar here. And then after that, we're gonna move immediately into the breakout groups. And so when you come in on Tuesday evening, there will be 10 different tables in this room, around the room. So there'll be no formal seating block like it's structured this evening. And each of you will be sitting at a separate table, the table that you are staffing, if you will, for that night. We'll go through the presentation. Steve will then get up and talk about the breakout groups and review the exercise. And then we're gonna jump right into it. And we'll do that on the 10 to 15-minute rotation sort of style. So 10 to 15 minutes will pass based on kind of what we're hearing from the groups. And you'll structure your discussion around those questions that were included and the topics and the resources that Steve's group will be bringing. And then we'll get on the microphone and say, "Okay, we'd like to ask you to move to another table. You don't have to, but if you'd like to talk about another topic, you're welcome to move on at this point." And we'll go through four rounds of that, which should round out the total hour and half time that we've budgeted for the night, so-
Why are you doing it that way? Why aren't you just, here are the tables, here are the people to talk to. If you have an interest in this, any of them, check them out. Session ends in an hour and a half. And leave it up to people to decide how long they want to linger at my and John's table or Kathy's table, whether they want to move on somewhere else. No, just leave it open, rather than pressing the buzzer, "Time to move", like, kind of like speed dating.
Yeah.
You're crazy.
It may be more of an invitation to move rather than time to move. And I, I would think that-
And I, I, yeah, I mean, I didn't say time to move. I said, I would say strictly, it's been 15 to 20 minutes. If you'd like to move to a new group, you're welcome to do that. You're welcome to stay. Yeah, I, I certainly don't want to push them to-
I misunderstood that.
I think it's important to try to have some of these people go to other stations rather than stay at one place all the time.
Oh, yeah, but wouldn't we want to leave that up to them to make that decision?
Absolutely, yeah. It's totally up to them. And I've talked to Steve. He'll do a nice job explaining that. It is all up to them. They can leave after 30 minutes if they'd like to. But I think we do wanna, we want to connect people to chapters that they might not think they have an interest in, that they may be interested in.
Here's another question. If some people come in, they come to my table and John's table, and they say, "We're really interested. It's pretty cool." And they drop their names down and they go wandering off. They'd like to be part of the subcommittee. And at the end of the evening, I look up and I don't see them anymore.
Yeah.
I would, I would really like to, at the end of the evening, have established a subcommittee meeting date and time for the first time. Or at the very least, get information from them and let them know that the very next day, something like that's gonna happen.
Yes, well, I think, I think so. At the beginning of the night, we're going to mention that there are sign-up sheets for the committees over on the tables. At the end of the night, we're gonna come back and do that again. But I think we can, I need to make it clear, I think, when I explain those sign-up sheets, that information will be passed along after the kickoff forum directly to the folks who sign up for that committee.
And they should be-
Is that adequate for-
Yeah, and they should understand that if they, if they sign up to join a subcommittee, that means that they are going to be expected to do stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Not just kick back and say, "I was a member of. It was really great", but they're, they're gonna be expected to maybe come to the library or the town hall, small conference room, on a frequent basis to get work done. They may have to interview department heads.
I agree with Mike. We need to, people need to know, what, what do you want me to do? That's gonna be a que, what can I do?
Yeah. They're gonna have to leave with expectations.
So that would be-
Which they're gonna have to feel comfortable with, whether or not they're-
Well, I, I really do disagree.
I think this tells them that, you know, and which it should, is this is important stuff. And, you know, here's, here's what you should expect as duties and activities.
The intent of the, of this kickoff forum is not to explain all of the requirements for the subcommittees. I just disagree. I think that that is the first subcommittee meeting. I don't think we want to scare people away at this first meeting.
Oh, would you be scared away if someone's wearing this Master Plan and you, we're gonna have a, you know, you're gonna-
I would not sign up on a sign-up sheet, sorry, Paul, if I didn't intend to commit myself to whatever it was I was signing up.
Right, but our hope, I think, is that we may get some folks that may have never gone through a Master Plan process before and that may be totally new. Right, so what I, what I am concerned about is if we say, "There are gonna be lots of meetings, and they're gonna be at town hall, and they're gonna be during the day", and I don't think we want to be exclusionary right off the bat.
We're not.
No, but what I'm saying is, what I'm suggesting is, if, again, John's in my table, there are, there is a list of the departments that we are responsible for dealing with. And clearly, there are going to have to be interviews and research done and this sort of work. People who sign up are gonna have to understand that some of this may fall on their shoulders if they're gonna be participating in this process.
But Mike, is it, is it, would you rather end up throwing out a wider net? And then in the first communication that you have with them, you end up talking about what the schedule is. And then, you know, 15 people signed up for whatever it was, and then you end up finding that five of those 15 decide, you know, "I don't want to do it."
I don't know.
That ends up, I think, being a reasonable thing. But if you end up making it sound very, very comprehensive, you may get a whole bunch of people who say, "Oh, I'm not gonna be available at that time", so you don't have the variety of people.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I, I have mixed feelings, and I don't want to monopolize the conversation here either.
We may be having people join the committees in June, May, or June.
Right. We'll have additional joining later on, yeah. No, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna give everybody who comes to John's and my table a hammer and a chisel and tell them to meet me at the Rock Face tomorrow. You know, but on the other hand, I'm, I'm gonna, we are going to expect that if they sign up, they intend some form of commitment.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Peter, though. I, you know, it's, I think, I think we need to at least communicate that there is a commitment of time.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think what's-
And the, and the time is gonna involve meetings and stuff of that, and some, and some, you know, some, some writing and stuff. We need to communicate that.
That's funny.
And I think Pete's idea of, you know, the more clarity about what that expectation is probably is at the inaugural meetings. I, I make, that makes sense.
Matt, what are we gonna have at our tables?
So you will have the Butcher Paper, which is the blank paper, like we have the easels at some meetings. You'll have, some of you will have maps, if there's a map associated with your chapter. That's gonna be the infrastructure, the land use, natural resources. Those folks will have maps. You'll have the chapter, the short chapter topic list, and then you'll have the questions. But those materials will be distributed to everybody in attendance. So you are free to do whatever you'd like, but I think that the questions will really guide you on what you end up talking about at the table. But the materials, the other materials, including the map and the chapter topics, are really just to sort of guide discussion, at least in some way, if you're having a hard time getting folks to talk about the particular topic that you are manning. Does that make sense?
So let's pick one. Let's just-
Let's, let's pick one.
Hang on.
I think that's a good exercise.
Yeah, let's just do this. Public infrastructure.
Okay, well, that's a good, good one because that's also energy.
Right.
So are we gonna talk about all of these in one lump group, or?
Yeah, so, if you are, so do we want to do public infrastructure? Is that a good place to start?
Sure.
Do that. I'm just gonna pull up my-
But energy is also gonna be at that same table.
Yes.
Should do that with Pete.
Correct.
Why don't you go, get at your table, Paul, and sit down, and we'll, we'll watch him.
Do you all have the list of topics and questions in your packets?
You mean the one with our names after?
No, not that. I'm just looking at my packet, and it doesn't seem like my packet has it. It's a list that you, we had at a previous meeting, and it looks like I may need to resend it to you. Yeah.
Nope.
Okay. Well, I will send that to you again. I apologize. It's not in the packet. So if you are at the public infrastructure chapter, and let's say that you get a new crop of folks that show up. So we have, the, the opening question, I think, that you should ask your group is, "What issues related to public infrastructure do you think will be important to Wolfboro over the next decade?" And I think that you're gonna be on that for 10 minutes easily. And if they say, "Well, I'm not really sure. What do you mean by public infrastructure?", you then have that topic list that was provided that says, and you all know what your topics are, but it says water, sewer, you know, recycling, solid waste, electrical, all of these things. You'll have that-
This is information we already have?
That's information you already have.
Okay.
And it's directly related to your chapter. But there's also a second question with every single table as well. In this case, for public infrastructure, the second question is, "What specific actions, policies, or ideas related to public infrastructure do you think are important for Wolfboro to consider for future generations?"
Send these questions out, Matt.
Yeah, we've looked at them at two other meetings. I can send them again, though, just, just so you have them again. So before the meeting, you really should review those questions and the topics.
Okay.
And, and you only have to know your specific topic, obviously. So it's, it's a list of about six topics and two questions for every group.
Where there are department heads?
Yeah.
I know, I think Dave's with his daughter, right? He's gonna be down in North-
Yeah, he's not gonna be, he's not gonna be-
Where there are department heads, will department heads be with us?
Yes, they are all invited. I think that we'll have attendance from 50%, let's say. We're gonna treat them as participants in that I think they're going to want to circle around as well. That said, I think you can shoulder tap if you have a specific question that comes up or, you know, you want to get their perspective on something. I think that's, that's totally fine. That makes a lot of sense.
Can you?
But they will be there.
On this chart, this chart here, and this letter here, don't line up. Just make sure that they line up. So-
He-
So this has, Transportation, Brad's got the table all by his onesie.
Yes, the, one is the table assignments, one is, is a different thing. That's why this is tricky. So the, the email you have are the table assignments for the forum next week?
Sure.
The other thing is the person assigned to the subcommittee. And it doesn't line up perfectly because of the way we're structuring, structuring it with having different tables for every chapter.
Well, every other one lines up with the exception of public infrastructure and transportation.
So Paul, what, what-
I have no idea what you're talking about.
What is the discrepancy?
Well, if I'm looking at this, so I, I was just trying to make sure that these two things matched, and they don't.
And they shouldn't.
They shouldn't.
They should not.
Okay.
Because these, these subcommittees include multiple chapters, whereas our tables are, our tables are a mix of some subcommittee structure and also breaking some specific chapters out. And that's just because we wanted to get as many specific topic tables as we could.
Okay.
So it's not a perfect one-to-one.
Sorry.
Are, are we gonna have the chapters from the 2007, and Peter's gonna have the natural resources plan?
Yes, yep. I can have the NRI and the chapters available to you.
He has to memorize it before, next to it.
Yes, he has to memorize it.
Including all the maps and the details there in.
So I will have the chapters available and, in this case, the NRI available to you. It's a pretty big document, as you probably know.
Have you seen it?
It is in electronic form.
Oh, cool, send it.
But I will have a copy.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's on our, our website.
Yep.
I think I've actually looked at it.
Yeah, well, it's pretty, it's interesting. You're gonna like it.
But I'm also horrible on NRI and whether that's an MRI or a, you know, whatever, I, you know.
Okay, but you're gonna find, you're going to find it interesting.
I'm slow.
If, if you noticed in the recently published town report, which was available as of today, Dan Kuhn states in the Conservation Commission chapter that they're revising the NRA and hope to have it done in 18. So there may be an update that they have that is not currently available to the public.
Okay, and I'm assuming that Dan is gonna pop on, pop on boards.
He's gonna be there, yeah.
How does a department head answer the question, the first question that you ask?
About what issues will be important over the next decade?
Yeah.
Um, how do they answer that?
Yep.
I would guess that the department has, that a head has a long-term vision.
Yeah, yeah.
At least, if not for, I mean, some department heads are trickier. Let's say the town clerk, for example. She's a department head. She has a very narrow focus. She may not have a vision for her department.
I got it.
But Barry, Dave, Christine, certainly the police and fire chiefs, I believe that they do have some sort of long-term vision.
So I think, I think their answer is gonna, is gonna be, I'll shorthand it. If you ask them, their answer is gonna be the CIP. Because a lot of what they want to accomplish in the next decade is embedded in the capital improvement program.
I don't think that their capital improvement program projects are going to perfectly align with what their vision is, their department.
Okay. Well, and the reason I ask is I want to, I want to bring out the conversation-
Yeah.
So that, so that there's a, you know, so that somebody can go home and say, "Hey, you know what? I met with Barry, and boy, I learned a lot about what he wants to accomplish. We had a conversation about what we want to accomplish, and we're coming away from this kind of with a, with a conversation beginning, right?"
Yeah, I mean, I think if, Barry's a good example where, you know, if you think about the CIP, has, he has specific substations, submarine cables that he was trying to upgrade. But I think, you know, if you were to ask him, "What's his vision for the future?", he may say something like, you know, "Having the most resilient and redundant network or system in the state of New Hampshire." And I don't know if that's what he would say, but I think it's going to be a broader conceptual view than the specific projects that are in the CIP. But obviously, they're supposed to work hand in hand.
I, I would just offer that we tee them up so that, you know, they, that they have that thinking in them, whatever they want to talk about, that they have the, you know, that thought process going on. So that when they sit and, you know, they're with the community, they can share what they think. And, and it's not just like you're asking them cold, right?
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. Do that.
Okay, so we're gonna all have the chapters from the 2007.
Yes.
Probably better look at those beforehand.
Mm-hmm. Have a, have a basic understanding, definitely, of the concepts in your chapters. Yep. And again, recognizing that those don't line up with what we're doing now. I mean, there's just, it's a-
You said that Steve was gonna have some, some of his folks.
Yes.
So what, what is their role?
So their role is they are actually going to be staffing-
The vision table.
The vision and land use table. They will be staffing those two tables. So there are gonna be two staff people who will be doing that. Steve and I are going to be sort of just lending assistance as necessary. I mean, and if one group really needs some support, you need somebody to write, I can do that, too. Whatever you need. Kathy, does that answer your question?
Okay, I have a bunch of people who I've talked to at my table, and said, "Make sure you sign up before you leave."
Sure.
You know, some of them leave earlier, and, you know, it's only their sign-up, which they're gonna, what's gonna be the timeframe for when we get those email addresses and the, the names of the people?
Is the question, when do we actually make contact with them the first time after the, after the forum?
Right.
I think it has to be within the next week.
I, I would like to have it as soon as possible, just so-
Yeah, I agree.
Right. So, and-
Okay.
If needed, I'll come in and help transcribe, but-
So you'd like to get the committee meetings set as quickly as possible?
I would like to get the names of the committee people as soon as possible.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just, just so that you can end up then getting an email out, finding out when you can actually get together to meet?
Right.
And then, so, you know, if it could be done the next day, that would be absolutely wonderful. Probably not possible.
It might be possible, it might be possible, yeah. I think, I think it, it certainly is. And if you'd like to stop in the day after, and we can put together your committee list, that's fine.
Fine, okay.
What I would say, though, is we have to make sure that we get the ground rules set up before we go-
You're gonna go over those?
What's that?
You're gonna go over those at the meeting?
No, not at the, not at the forum.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the ground rules are going to be the, the noticing and, you know, all the, the administrative stuff.
I like Pete's idea, then as soon as we can get our hands on the, the contact list, the better. What I, you know, and if we have to do the noticing thing, that's fine, but we'd like to be able to at least say, "Hey, welcome aboard," you know.
Right, and then start to figure out when you can actually hold meetings.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be-
You know, the various groups, and, you know, how do you end up doing that?
I agree.
And I would say we should hold first meetings in March. I mean, with no, no question, I think.
And Matt, are you gonna comment on resources available to the committees?
Yes.
You should do that.
Okay.
What resources are avail, you know, it, you know, it, 'cause, 'cause you know that people are gonna wanna know everything, right? And, you know, what resources can be made available, and how do you access those resources?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be good.
The contact list is gonna exist in what form? The one that we generate Tuesday night?
Um, I honestly hadn't given it very specific thought, but it could be, could send out any, any various form. It could be a Word document, I could do an Outlook contact, contact group.
I wasn't clear. During the meeting, they tell us, "Yeah, I sure wanna be on your subcommittee." And they, what, do they write on the butcher paper, or does there a form that they fill in?
So we'll have forms available, we'll have signup forms available at the front of the room, so it'll be an email, phone number kind of system.
By committee?
Yes.
Then I can just take that list and-
If you, if you remember, we, we reviewed this at a prior meeting, we'll have sort of a matrix where you'll have their name and contact information, and they can check off which committees they're interested in. And we want them to do that, I think, at the end.
Yeah.
Preferable, because then they'll really know which committees they wanna be involved with, but if they'd like to do that at the beginning, they can do that as well.
I know.
Then I can just transcribe the names of the people that are on our committee right then and there at the spot, and-
I don't know if this makes sense or not, but I mean, is there some type of administrative help that we could get that could take those names and emails, create a, you know, kind of a, I don't know, CSV file, or some, something that you'd send to me that says, "Here's your energy committee."
I mean, it-
And, you know, and when I hit the, when I hit the send button, I just pick up that list and, and send it out. Now I still would want the names of the people, but if there's somewhere that you could help shorthand, that, that would be helpful, at least to me.
I can do that.
Well, I don't want you doing it, but, but I'll, I can do it, too. I was just wondering if, we're gonna have, you're gonna have all of these committees' times and number of people? I mean, is there some way to do it easier? That's all.
Right, yeah, Matt, I'm, I mean, you, you've got here that we're gonna start in March, but then you just said before, we talked about that, that we were gonna have a session on how the committee meetings were gonna be functioning.
Well, I think you should, you should have, so I, I think that your meetings should be in late March. I think at the planning board meeting, early March, based on where our caseload will be, I think we can quickly touch upon those ground rules.
We can do it in February, we've got time.
I don't think it will be too, too much.
Yeah, okay, well, you, you're the one that brought it up.
I think the, so, the ground rules are gonna be self-explanatory, aren't they?
Ground rules are gonna be self-explanatory. The, the, the timing issue is, how much information can I realistically get together before the end of March for the committees? That's gonna be the tricky part, and I'll just do the best that I can.
That's what Steve's supposed to help you with.
That, Steve is definitely supposed to be the primary on that, but I'll have to run point on what exactly it is that we collect for information, so.
We have, have talked a number of times about you providing us with the existing conditions for each chapter, is that still?
That's still, yes, that is still the plan.
Okay, so, it seems like we'd need that at the very beginning.
We're gonna need that at, basically, at the end of March, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And you also said you were gonna try and go to all these committee meetings?
I cannot do that. I, I mean, it's gonna be a scramble just to get-
To cut you in half, or quarters.
Um, I'm gonna try to get to the first meetings of all the committees, I think. At least be there for the first session.
Okay, well, this, this is important stuff for us to know, is-
Yeah, but I, I'm accepting that I just, I won't be able to attend all the meetings. And I think that's good, because I think that there was initially a lot of resistance to me being in meetings, and I-
Okay, but you, you wanna attend the first meeting of the-
I'd like to.
Sure.
There was resistance to having you attend the meetings?
Absolutely.
From outside the world, not, not inside this board?
Um-
I'm, I don't resist it.
There was just resistance. There was a lot of resistance to having me overly involved in the process, so.
Well, the, I think that you, your position is a position of real strength, therefore may end up tending to limit conversation.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm trying to respect the, the process that was used as part of the 2007 plan as much as possible, and that included limited staff participation during the development process of the chapters. So there's been a push for me to sort of follow that model, and-
Well, I think it, I think it makes, the, maybe I hear this differently. I mean, this is, this, we should be out doing our work with the constituents.
Right.
Period. We should, you know, there should be a body of data, town budgets, you know, the common stuff, that we shouldn't be burdening you with. It should be like one place, you know, and for lack of a better term, I'll say, in the cloud. We should have that accessibility to that stuff.
Hmm.
Period. We should get together and try to formulate some ideas and thoughts about how we're gonna do our little chapters with the, with the citizens. Period. Every so often, you should weigh in and kind of look and see how things are going, and, and if we need extra help, you chime in. Period. And those are just-
When we end up having a report, or we have information, we send out to a committee, he should be on the, on the carbon copy.
Yeah, that's gonna be one of the rules.
Exactly, and you should be, yeah, you should be, because you're the town planner.
Aware of what we're doing, and so it's-
I don't, I don't, I don't, that, I, I haven't heard, you know, the, the, limit your exposure, but I, what I think what we wanna do is, we wanna keep the town department heads, you, doing your day job, and, and weighing in when appropriate. But I, I think it's important to have accessibility to you as, but not-
Yeah.
-drag you into every dang, dang meeting we have.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to temper my own interest in being involved, because I'd like to be more involved.
Yeah.
But-
Hey, what, what-
Our door is, our door will always be open.
You would want one?
But I realize that the committees, you know, the committees are, are going to do the work, and I'm, I'm, I have accepted that, and I support it now, so.
So is Steve and his group gonna provide each committee with some sort of-
Existing conditions.
-gatter, or, so that-
They had, yeah, they'll have to. What I, I do wanna mention, though, and I, this actually came out of a conversation with Paul, please don't, and I'm not saying you would ever do this, don't set me up for failure to not provide you with something that you really need. So what my ask is, is if there's something specific that you need, tell me as early as you possibly can, because then I have the accountability of having to respond to what you need, and then you're gonna get it. What will probably not work is just waiting to the first, till the first meeting where I have to deliver you a package, because it's not gonna be exactly what you want. It might not even be close to what you want. So if you have thoughts about your chapters, and specific pieces of information, please tell me as early as you can, and I'll try to get-
Continue on what, on what you and I talked about. Continue with what we, what we did. Just explain how it, how this is unfolding.
Trying to remember exactly what-
So I sent them a data request several weeks ago.
Yes, yep.
And I said, you know, "I think the, the committees that, you know, will be involved with are gonna wanna know certain things." And they're, it's common town data. It's not like, I, I didn't want Matt to make up new stuff for me, generate new reports. It's just, I need some data. And, and it was budgets, it was plans, you know, programs that, that the different departments had. In the event that somebody says, "Jeez, how, how does it, how does it currently work?", we could go get it, rather than come running after Matt and saying, "Oh, my God, we'll miss our deadline unless you give me what I need immediately."
Right.
I don't, I, so that's, that's kind of, I think, the right thing to do.
That's all I have.
I'd, I'd make it more outcome-centric. The, the '07 master plan, the '95 master plan, stuff got done. And to the extent that you can simplify it in pictures for people to say, "Ah, okay, now I understand what could be possible," that would be great. And then turn it over to the tables and let them go.
Just don't get hung up in, in data. Look at the '95, and look at the '07 master plans, look at their suggestions for the future. They were not data-centric, and I don't think we should be data-centric. I'm not sure that I'm gonna be parsing the budgets of the departments that, that Community Facilities Chapter is gonna be looking at.
Maybe not.
I don't, I don't think, if we're gonna be looking towards what, if this is for the next 10 years.
Yeah, maybe not.
Um, I don't think we're gonna get hung up, gonna get hung up with that. And I also suggest that each subcommittee chairperson, planning board member, assume that he or she is gonna be doing a ton of work digging up this kind of data.
What's a daily-
We're not gonna have to be asking Matt for very much assistance at all. Things like the data that, that Paul was describing is in the public record and can be found if you just go look for it.
Part of the rules, though, are going to be that I, if you're going to go to department heads, I want you to go through me, and that is not, that is for the department heads, not for me. Just, I wanna, I don't wanna be pulling them in, like, I think about Dave, who I obviously work next to, he's gonna be getting emails constantly about different things that people want, because he's just involved with so much. I wanna be able to control what the asks are of him at some level. Otherwise, he's gonna get distracted everywhere.
Absolutely.
It's just his work style, and I don't want that to happen to him.
Absolutely.
So, yes, I'm recommending that requests go through me, but I really think, I, I'm convinced that that is the best way to do it.
Absolutely.
I wanna talk to Dean Rondo with John. I've gotta talk to you first.
If you want the number of calls the police department took last year, yes, I want you to go through me.
I already have that.
Right, but those, those-
We did our interview last year.
No, under, I, I'm just giving an example, that's not the point.
Do you, do you need-
If you want to have an interview, you can do that, but I'm saying for a simple data request or other piece of information, just go through me.
Yeah, makes sense.
I'm sorry, it just-
And you're gonna, you're gonna get-
Department heads are going to come to me and be quite perturbed if we don't do that. That will happen, I promise you.
So there's a balance here. I think, you know, I, I would, I-
I'm just concerned, hang on, Paul, I wasn't quite finished. I'm just concerned that you are gonna wind up being burdened by this, and also become a choke point.
The inner clog in the process.
I guess that's a risk, but-
You're also removing autonomy.
Let's, let's see how it works for a while, and it may end up changing. I mean, that's what I would say, you know.
That's exactly right.
That's, that's a good solution.
Becomes a problem, then, I mean-
Around the track.
It's a good solution.
And, and I can see that the department heads just don't want random questions coming from everybody, and-
I, when, when John and I interviewed our four department heads, they could not have been happier.
Right.
Right.
And I'm not saying that they-
Finally got a chance to talk to somebody about the stuff that was important to them.
Right.
You know, when it was gonna get published, and blah, blah, blah.
And so, but it's-
It's balance, it's a balance.
And if it doesn't work, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna make it seem like I'm discouraging you talking to them, I just don't want it to be regular requests for information to the department heads, to the point where-
No, I think you have to assume that we're not that naive, that we've all-
No, I don't think that, I just-
We've all worked in business, and we kinda know how things work.
Yeah, I'm not implying that.
I think, again, I think Pete's advice is right, let's, let's, if this thing gets aberrant, we do it. And the other guidance we should probably give each other is, we should never ask somebody for information about their little operation that they don't have already.
And I think we're gonna find quite a bit of that, actually, which might be interesting, so.
I mean, it's a balance.
Matt, can I, can I just ask about the breakout groups? Land use, is he gonna be talking about future or just existing land use?
I think they're gonna-
Is he gonna have the existing map, is that?
So I think they're gonna talk about a little both. I think they're gonna talk about existing and future land use, Kathy.
Who are?
Both.
Who are?
So, one of their staff members is staffing that table.
How can you talk about future land use?
Yeah, right, that's-
Ask questions about it?
That's where I was going.
I know, what the, what the-
What do they know about our future land?
And what, what, where, where-
I don't think they can facilitate a group about future land use, though.
No, I, I was being serious, though.
Yeah, I mean, they, they will be staffing the table, and I think, I, I see no reason why they're not qualified to ask questions about future land use. I think that they can do that well. I don't think that they need to-
Ask questions.
They answer questions.
Yeah, right, I mean, they're just-
Answer questions.
Really should.
No, I'm saying, they are going to be playing the role at that table that you are playing at your table. Your table is, your role is not to answer questions or guide the discussion, just to make that clear. It's just not. You're facilitator basically in this role. So they're gonna be doing the same thing. You're gonna have answers. You're gonna give your opinion every now and then because you, you, you have a good sense of what's going on. They might not be able to do that, but they know they're definitely not supposed to provide their opinion as they see it because they're experienced facilitators.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna get off, you know, the, the gate's gonna open, the bell's gonna ring, the horses are gonna run down the track and there's gonna be a stumble and a, and a jockey's gonna fall off. And maybe, you know, for the first close in period, we check up with each other, you know, frequently. You know, we doing the right thing, we, we, you know, and, and I think, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get a stride. We'll get a stride. It'll work.
Yeah, I think so too. I think it's.
Early on, we oughta just make sure we don't, you know, we don't get off on the wrong.
Yeah, and I think, you, you know, you.
Every single battle plan, it doesn't survive the first contact.
Yeah, and you, you, you all are asking a lot of good questions that I don't have good answers to. And I think that's good that we're planning for every possible outcome or scenario. But I think there gets to a point where we just have to say, we're, we have a structure.
Alright, we go.
Let's try it out. If there are failures or weaknesses, we'll change it. I mean, you gotta go for it.
We'll respond to Newark's, Newark's stimuli.
We'll do it. We'll be fine.
It's gonna be good.
Yes, one of my.
Make it fun.
One of my thoughts as we're going through this hour long discussion on how we're going to do this is that this forum was supposed to be three weeks ago and we had not had a similar discussion. So I think we're much further ahead because of the, the storm.
We're much more informed.
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll be fun.
Just fine.
It, it's gonna be fun.
Let's talk on, let's talk on Wednesday morning next week, see, see what happens. I don't think there's any way that next Tuesday doesn't go, doesn't satisfy sort of our expectations of it. I think it'll go well. I really do.
Did we come to some conclusion? I missed this part. I mean, the original thing was the, what I, what Dave does when he does his context sensitive solution, like the speed dating, you know, blow the whistle, fifteen minutes, go to the next booth. Are we gonna do that or are we gonna let people, you know, go where they wanna go?
It's gonna be kind of a mix. I'm gonna get up and say, it's been fifteen minutes since we started. You're welcome to move along to another table, but you're also welcome to stay at the one that you're at and talk as long as you'd like. So I'll do that every fifteen minutes and we'll, we'll make it clear that we'll do that basically four times. You'll have the opportunity for four tables if you'd like to, or to move around every two minutes if you wanna do that too, so.
And if you state that it's every fifteen minutes, it gives somebody a, a, a sense of how long they've spent at some place. Now maybe I need to move on or whatever, so.
Yeah, and if you were at the twenty eight forum, I mean, we had a structured table setup, but people start to go, you know, as they please. And that's good. I think that's fine. It's just, uh.
Yeah, it, that does sort of disintegrate kind of, kind of quickly.
Yeah, right. And, and, and we shouldn't overstructure it. Let, let folks do what they wanna do.
Right. And we're, just so you know, we're not doing, typically you'll see a report out at the end of the night. We're not planning to do a report out at this session. Unless you all hear, hear really good things and we can keep a dynamic and do it, but I don't think it's necessary to do. We're just gonna close with talking about how people get involved, how they sign up for a committee, thank them for being there.
And that they'll hear from us by the end of March or something?
Yeah, that, that subcommittees are planning to meet by the end of March, yes.
In a week.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna, subcommittees are gonna meet as soon as, I would suggest, subcommittees meet as soon as they possibly can.
Right, yes.
I'm wasting.
I'm not gonna meet in the last part of March.
End of March is a little late. If we, if we meet next Tuesday.
I was just going by his timetable. He just talked, talked about.
I understand. What, what I'm suggesting is that there's no reason why, if we can move faster, we, we can.
Yes, I agree with that.
I would like to have an opening meeting second week of March.
Okay. I don't know if that's feasible, but we can try and do that.
I can't do it.
The, the unique opportunity is that, that you do have an NRI to go off of, which is, has a lot of data. And you may not need the same attention in the beginning that other committees do need. So that might be a possibility.
Okay. Okay, folks.
I think it's gonna be fun.
Yeah. We need to look at it that way. It's gonna be fun.
But I think, I, I think Pete's suggestion is, is spot on. If you show these charts, whatever you wanna call them, that has the bars on them and the percentages and the, I think, I think you're gonna get a lot of thought leadership from people, a lot of questions, and that's really not what you wanna do. You wanna maybe say to people as a handout, you have some data here. But I would ask that you, you know, maybe you, you think about one, what are the top five things that these charts distill down into? That, and maybe it's just your opinion, but these are the things that when you percolate this all down, these are the, you know, leading thoughts. They wouldn't be necessarily the, the ones we get all our heads around, but what are they? And that at least positions the conversation, I think, for these round robins we do at the tables.
Okay, so we can adjourn if you.
I've got, I've got one comment.
Oh, okay, alright.
Uh, in the, in the interest of educating myself and being more informed, after the last meeting, I went out and researched some storm water management techniques and storage items that I think we need to apply in our town as a, as continuity. One business after another, we'll all be tying in. And we want people to know that what we're designing doesn't have to be scary and it doesn't have to be costly, it just has to be effective. Because what we do know is that the first town that starts implementing the storm water management to keep our lake clean will be the town that has the cleanest water in their lake. So as I went out to research, I found a source that provides local materials, drainage, and an offer was put on the table that we could have a advanced drainage systems consultant do a presentation on the most recent techniques, cutting edge, what, what is available now. And we could all get a real sense of what we're discussing because tonight was a good example. We, we talked about things, but maybe some of us didn't quite understand it. And the, what I, what I think is more important is that the people out there watching, they need to be able to see these techniques and say, I can apply them to my residential plot as well as my commercial plot. It just doesn't have to be one dimensional and people can go out and do it themselves and they can, they can bet our legs. So I want to throw that out there to the board and see if we could arrange a, a time at a work session where Rich Verrier will come in and, and discuss these options with us.
There are two events this spring with the Wentworth Watershed Association. One is a landscaping workshop and the other is going to be another water summit. And those are places where there's resources which are, are there about that kind of thing. And I think that the Wentworth Watershed Association probably has a larger water shed going into Lake One of Saki than any other part of the town. So, you know, obviously their watershed is, is important and they're working on it, so. But those are things that are their resources that are being provided this, this, this spring.
Okay, I, I've got the.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I've got the, the April fifth, I think, is the landscape one. When's the water?
April fifth and the other, I think, is May something or other. I don't know when it is.
Okay.
Think about maybe a joint meeting?
Um.
The Wentworth Watershed Association and the planning board to hear his presentation to get the word out to even more people.
What, what do you think? Do you think?
Yeah, it's all about coordinating at this point and, and finding the right time.
Do you know who's in charge of the, the water quality?
Uh, that'd be Ann Blodgett would be the contact.
I can reach out to Ann.
Okay.
Yeah, I can reach out to Ann. Mention it to her.
Because they, they had a lot of people that came to the one last May.
Yeah. So are we thinking sort of a joint session?
Or, or something informal. So just, it's informational.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to, should we have to be a scheduled meeting of the planning board unless you want it to be?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. And I, I, I talked to John quickly about it today and, yeah, I think it's a great idea. Even if it is from a private consultant, I mean, these are things that we're, clearly we're talking about.
Right. Or, or, yeah, then come to a, if Ann, if their program is already established, could have him come to a, a work session and do it first before our discussion about the master plan, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea.
Okay. So you wanna follow up with?
I'll follow up with Ann. I can follow up with John directly about the consultant specifically.
Is he from close by, John? Okay.
You know, those kinds of things are just more options. Those are good for people. We don't make, you know, we, you know, I, if, if somebody could voluntarily just say, yeah, you know, this is a good option. Now, you know, we got the town thinking about this stuff. I'll go do that for myself. That's, that's what we're, that's good. That's a good thing.
Okay, that's great.
I'll go run up and down the street making everybody put it in.
Okay. So you'll let us, okay, anything else?
We have minutes or anything? We didn't have minutes, right?
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Let's, let's adjourn.
Good job, John. That's good.
Thank you, John, for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.